Appreciate everyone being here. Audrey?
We're happy to meet you.
We're happy to meet you. I'm like Ms. Priggs.
I thought you was going to ask her if she wanted to speak first.
I didn't.
What's it called?
All right. Anybody had any question about the, um, you got me on this stuff? On the agenda, everyone had time to look at, I'm sure, any questions or changes on that? Changes, I don't think.
Oh, no, I take that back. I would like to amend the agenda.
Okay.
Just for a little bit of discussion and information at the end, if needed, about what we're going to do with the recyclables.
Okay.
Amen.
All right.
And leave your own some page.
All right, let's move down to approval of our previous minutes. Everybody's had time, I'm sure, to look at that. Any questions or changes, concerns on that?
No, sure.
Personnel status and all that. Only change that we've had is during energy. We got two. I know it's one at six ago, the mandates go, sheriff was talking about that the other day. Kind of with that, it's not. Stacy, have you got any, you, any people coming on, summer help that we're not, that, okay, so there's no, no change in that? Any questions on that?
No.
Move down to number four, board appointments and proformations. Don't have any appointments, it's the same good as we've got. Pretty much everything covered on that. No proformations, don't, in the answer. Okay. Move down to number five, this is approval of S-Plots, capital equipment. And as I know, there's not anything on that this week, on the roster. Number six, this is approval of our ARP-A expenditure. Day County Fire Training Center.
I table that.
Go ahead and table it.
We're gonna, they needed to do a request for proposal before they presented it.
Okay. That was, you talked to Anselm and Kyle and all, okay. Number seven, historic courthouse restoration project. Mr. Jamie, come on up here, little Jamie.
Not quite, Mr. Jamie.
I know, tell us who you are.
I'm Kyle Liggins, Bloods Construction.
You're superintendent kind of, you hold, okay.
For our budget status right now, RFP 2023, number 16, for landscaping scope of the projects has been issued. Responses have been requested for the 21st of this month. We're going to have a mandatory pre-bid on the 12th at 10:00 a.m. Moving down to our construction schedule, our HVAC roughing is continuing. Our planned plaster rings for upstairs and the ceilings, it's not going to work like we had planned. The ceiling joists are in the way, but Billy Reeves with Reeves Heating and Air is looking at getting us an alternate to be able to fix that issue. Framing and drywall still ongoing, and as well as our in-wall electrical. Additional courtroom ceiling tiles have been reproduced to replace the tiles where the old HVAC grills are now. And some of our ceiling fans are just damaged tiles. And our exterior drain line work is scheduled to be within the next two weeks. And I don't have any significant open items right now. As for contact status, upcoming RFPs include doors and hardware. And we have been working with a hardware vendor to make sure that we have some vintage style door hardware that remains functional to today's standards. And that's all I have.
That opening, the opening, do you have it here in the room? Is that where, that, that, that opening, you mentioned at first?
Uh, yes, it'll be received here.
Here, oh, okay.
Yes, just like all the rest of it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any questions?
After the exterior drain line, y'all are, we're going to fix the wall finally. I mean, ultimately, that's what we've been waiting for.
Yeah.
Some people, we've been wanting to know about that.
Yeah, they'll have to have some kind of machinery to do all that. And we figured that would be the best.
But we left it open because.
So we could get the drain, too.
We're going to do that anyways.
Yeah.
I just have a question. When, when Jamie, was your last time, you talked about the floors upstairs. Been able to finish them, but, and I did go look at them, and somebody on every joist has driven.
Nails.
A nail in every joist, one after the other, 16 inches.
Yeah.
Is that going to be salvageable, or is that going to, do you know yet, you got to that place?
Yes, it is, but the person that we have contacted with said they can't really give us a price to do it like that. It'll have to be on like a kind of a time and material basis. They'll give us a per hour price and then set off from there. The good news, all the nails in the floor downstairs have been removed, so that's not a process we'll have to do up there.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thanks for the report, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Number eight, Mr. Evan Stone, he's our executive director of Day County Economic Development. He has a report for us tonight.
Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to come. I've got our board chair, Dr. Cantrell. He came with me tonight as we've got a number of things we want to talk about. A lot of you already know some of it, but I'm going to go back over from the beginning, kind of give you an idea of what's been happening. We'll start with the initial projects, and that's going to, of course, Trenton Pressing. Trenton Pressing is about three weeks behind. I talked to Brad Kaufman today, only because of the rain. You know, they're having a deal with the elements and the rain that we've been having. And those of you in construction, Commissioner Hartline can agree to that. But they are, they still feel like that they're going to be making their, their timeframe by the end of the year. We, the Robin, the county attorney, and I went to, along with, uh, last week, I guess it's almost two weeks ago, and got the phantom bonds approved by the Superior Court for them to be able to move forward. Now, and what we mean by phantom bonds, this is because of the land acquisition through the Industrial Development Authority. The Industrial Development Authority nor the county or anything are putting any money in. It's all, all private money that they're building this expansion with, up on top of the hill, the $10 million expansion on the building. But they are working full force, and if you've been by there, you'll, you'll see a lot of activity going on. Lot of, lot of rock being, being hewn up from the earth and crushed, and, and so they are moving right ahead. Inergy, uh, they're still in the process of their $8 million expansion. I was pleased to find out that they're up to about 430 employees, and they're just adding every day. And as quick as they get these two new production facilities and these clean rooms, they're going to be adding more. And they're, of course, going to have their office complex. That construction is going to be starting real real soon. Matter of fact, Robin and I had a conference call with their attorney earlier this morning on, on getting the deed swap for the, it's, it's a really small piece of land that the Industrial Development Authority are selling to Inergy. But they have to be able to do that for them to build the, the building for their, just for their corporate offices here in, in Day. Map's already up here on the wall. We're pleased to, uh, just in the last couple of months, that we've closed on a additional piece of property. Right now, we're calling it the Trenton Day Business Park North, which is on Highway 11. And about 78 acres. And the, the site that we're going to turn into a business park is about 40 acres. So we've got, uh, I think 26 acres that's on the west side of the interstate that we're going to be looking to do some things with. It's not going to be industrial. We don't believe there's not, there's no infrastructure over there. But it is, uh, it is, we are going to be looking to do something with it in the near future. And then there's eight acres that's going to be east of the railroad track. You'll see that long stretch. We had a, we had a recommendation, I won't say who, but somebody wanted us to put an air, a airport there, landing strip. It's long enough from what I understand, but that's the old US Highway 11 road bed.
Road bed.
Road bed down through there. So, you know, we've got all of that. We've already got two prospects that we're talking to, two different projects. If you may recall, last year, I talked to you about Project Hardwood. Had a great conversation that, that project is moving. And I talked with the CEO and the founder of that company today. And it was a really positive phone call. And we're moving towards getting him some things together. We'll be able to do from the IDA, the JDA in the state of Georgia, as far as incentives, to be able to, uh, he's looking at a couple of other places outside the state of Georgia. But definitely, he, he likes our area, and we've had one of their board members already on site. And we took them around to about five different sites, and he, they really liked this site on Highway 11. So that, that conversation is moving forward, and that's Project Hardwood that y'all are somewhat familiar with.
Let me verify something else right in there. How much is on the west side of the freeway?
On the west side, there's about 26, I believe, 26, 27 acres, something like that, on the west side.
200 and close.
Yeah. It's less than 30.
And the east side of the railroad tracks?
East side, we thought that that was only four acres, turned out to be eight when we had it surveyed.
And that's the old road bed?
Down, down, down through there.
So we think we'll be able to get through to this main piece?
We're in the process of looking at a couple of grants that'll take the city sewer system up there to that, to that, that part. And we've already had conversations, and I've had a meeting with Georgia Power. There's already three-phase power on there, and they're working with us on, on what we can do. As a matter of fact, Georgia Power is going to be making a, an initial layout of the land for us. And of where we can set different sized buildings and different things, and where a road may go. And they, they'll do that all for us, basically, at no cost for the, for the IDA or the county. So that, and, and there'll be a, there's one house, and I'll ask Commissioner, uh, Rumley, executive, to, to talk a little bit about this, because I didn't actually go inside. The Price Farm had a big two-story house, and it's still there. We had hopes that it would be something that could be restored, moved, or something. But after you go, the looks are deceiving from the front. And I know that, Mr. Rumley, you've actually been inside. I have not.
We did. Billy and I went down and looked at it because you had mentioned, you know, maybe trying to salvage it. But, you know, if you look from outside, it looks, it's really good looking. But when you go in there, everything's caved in. They've let the roof go for, for years and years and years. There's one area in the back part, if you could put a small car through it, all the way down in the floor, it's completely dropped to the ground, you know, and I don't know, it just, it take, I don't know. I mean, there's just no way, just to.
So look for that in the next week or so. We, we did want to make it public in case there's anybody out there that may, you know, be keen to some of them that want to take pictures or do something or whatever. Before you do that, please let the commission office know. We've got no trespassing signs that are up, and we've, we've changed the, the locks on the gate. You may notice that Billy's done a lot of mowing and bush hogging down there, and he's got to look at it real, real good. But that, unfortunately, that, the old Price House will have to, will have to come down. And we're trying to figure out exactly the best way to do that, whether just tear it down, or maybe donate to the fire department or something. But that's going to be in the next week or so. And I think there's been several family members have already came and looked at it.
Got some pieces that they wanted, you know, but it's, yeah.
Want to make sure that everybody knew that, that we were going to do that, and that it's just not, oh, we're going to tear it down. We actually looked at it and realized it can't be used for anything anymore.
Yeah.
That, of course, excited about that, to be able to have two projects already. At this point in time, if both projects come through, we're probably already out of land, which is a great problem to have. The, uh, the how, the, the house, of course, we'll take care of, take care of that. We're working on one other project. It's Project Caspian that was given to us through the Georgia Economic Development. We've had one site visit. The, the site selector, as well as a real estate agent for this company, met, met with all of us. Spencer and Jeff Mullis from the JDA, county executive, Mr. Rumley, and myself, we met with them. It was a very productive meeting, met with them a little over an hour here, around this table. It's a, it's a, it's a project that we should know something here in just a few months. But it's, it's a favorable project. We're kind of excited about that. But we, we don't know, do not have a clue what Project Caspian means, you know. Nobody, nobody does. A lot, a lot of folks, and let me just stop there and, and say just briefly, a lot of folks may not understand that these, these projects are set because the company that may want to come into your community, our community, they're also looking at other communities. And they don't want anybody to know, they don't, they don't want anybody, the right hand know what the left hand's doing. Because in this climate, they're negotiating, they could be negotiating with five different cities and counties, and even states, on who will give them the better deal. That's, that's really what we're looking at now, you know. They may say, we want to be in the south, or we may want to be near Chattanooga or whatever. But outside of that, every town is going to be loading up incentives and trying to pull them into their area. And that's the reason, they'll just tell us it's Project Caspian, or Project Hardwood, or Project whatever. And we don't know until we make the shortlist. And then we have to sign a piece of paper since we can't tell anybody. Then it really gets secretive. But as far as the, I mean, that's dictated by the companies that may want to locate here, because that's just the way they do business. I just wanted to bring that up, because I think there'd been some, some folks that may have mentioned, well, how come we didn't know this and that and the other? And on the other side, like the real estate, the board, as well as the commission, you want to be able to buy a piece of real estate at the lowest possible price for the taxpayers. And that's the same way with the IDA. You know, they'll look at buying something, but they have to keep it secret, because if everybody knew that the government was going to buy it, then it costs more. Y'all, y'all know that, you know. But I did want to say that, because, or maybe not always costs more, but sometimes it does. Okay, maybe that's fair. But anyway, I wanted to go into that just a little bit, because there's been some folks that ask about that, and that's, that is why. So several projects are ongoing. On a professional level, our dentist here in the city is working through the permit process to get his practice open. And kind of excited.
I noticed that, yeah, they started construction inside of like, yeah.
And.
Tell everybody where that's, tell everybody where that's at, in case they haven't heard.
Uh, the, the home health building that is just south of the Dollar General store, this south of Moore Funeral Home, will be the new dentist office. And I've been working with a dentist, it's a medical firm that specializes in relity for just professional doctors and dentists and things like that, and out of Atlanta. So they're, they're going to be moving here, so we'll have a new dentist soon. And we've got one other retailer, their retailer's looking at a expansion, so that's, that is good than existing. I want to talk a little bit about workforce development. I may have told you last year, when I done my report at the end of the year, I'd returned from Savannah, from the Georgia Economic Development Summit. And the one thing they talked about is workforce housing. It's never been an economic development slash industrial development issue until now. And not only is it an issue here locally, but it's an issue all over the state. And Governor, Governor Kemp set aside several million dollars and to do grants and make them available for counties that, that need to bring in additional housing for workforce. There's a lot of stipulations that go, go along with it. The, the Industrial Development Authority, the board voted a couple of months ago to look into the grants and, and try to make them available if possible. The, it is, I just wanted to tell you who it was through.
But this is actually not, the IDA is not going for the grant. You're going to assist different contractors.
You're going to assist the contractors to. City, or a county, or a industrial development authority to apply. So we're applying for these grants through, for private contractors. And the way that they work, it's through the one Georgia authority. And this money, there's a lot of stipulations. Right now, we've got four different companies that want to look at applying. And we made the initial grant application last week with the four different companies. They have since come back and said, well, we're going to delay the process, so if you want to add some. There's no restrictions on how many we can add, you know. But we're, we're only basically the conduit to do this. And it's, to squash any other rumors, it is, it has nothing to do with Section 8 housing. I got confronted with that a couple of weeks ago. Absolutely has nothing to do with it. This is money that was set aside by Governor Kemp to be able to assist in infrastructure, and also loans to contractors that would come and build subdivisions, apartment complexes. And the housing, just to give you an idea, you have to sell your home between 125,000 and 290,000. So $290,000 is the highest priced home that if a contractor got, got a, got a grant through the state, he couldn't sell half a million dollar homes. He has to make affordable workforce housing. And that's only a loan to that contractor, low interest loan to the contractor. The infrastructure grant that would be for water and sewer and utilities could be up to two and a half million dollars per project. And that will help bring the infrastructure in if someone was, you know, wanting to put together a subdivision. We've got two different, two different folks that are looking at apartment complexes. And once again, on rental, it's set, and it has to be at least two bedrooms or more. And there has to be a price set on, you know, how much, how much that they can rent it for. But this is private company. We're just assisting on the grant. They may not get the grants. I mean, y'all know how grants are. You may apply for 20 and get two. But it is money that was set aside for workforce housing. One of the things that we're seeing is the fact that we're blessed here in this county because of the Lyman College and the college out on the mountain. There's a lot of rental homes that are taken up by that. But then you add the Airbnbs on top of that, where folks are, you know. So a lot of the everyday rental homes that we, we have seen over the years, and I'll even add one more, 10, what, 11 years ago, when we lost 178 homes, I think, that were either lost or damaged, and the apartment complexes, and the tornadoes.
Leaving court, yeah.
We've never recovered from that. We've never recovered from that. The school system's never recovered from the number of students. I think at one time, we were up to almost 2,400 students in the school system, and now we're about 21 or 22. Since the tornado, we just never recovered because of housing. So, you know, we're just assisting these folks, and we've got four different contractors that are going to be applying. William is, as you know, a great grant writer, and he's going to be assisting them on their grants. And we're going to be the one that applies, but really doesn't got, it doesn't have a lot to do with the Industrial Development Authority other than it gives us workforce housing that's affordable for someone to work at Inergy or Vanguard, or Trenton Pressing, or wherever they may be. Any questions on, on that? So I know that was a lot, and I apologize, but, you know, wanted to make sure that, and if anybody's out there that wants to find out more about this, we're available. And William will be happy to talk with them and send them a packet of information if there's someone out there.
Your numbers on website?
Yes.
On, okay.
Can get in touch with, with me, and of course.
Or you can call us, and we'll put you in touch with.
Yeah, and we can get you the, the packet, the packet of information. Just a lot of activity going on, and I, I think it's, it's a great post-COVID era, because there's a lot of activity. And if we can land some of the, some of these projects, I think it'll be a win for the county, and we'll just continue stepping up the plate. I mean, we are going against countless numbers of counties and, and, and cities. But I feel like we're in the game largely because of y'all and the, and the Industrial Development Authority. Got a great board. Y'all have been supportive through splash funds to be able to buy land. Because if you don't have soap, you can't have soap to sell. We've all heard that. And y'all have, y'all have helped us do that, and now we got a little bit of soap, and we may have already sold it before. We don't know that for sure, but we definitely got some folks looking at the soap.
Good.
Any questions?
At what point would y'all get involved with our heavy use board?
As far as the Industrial Development Authority is concerned, that property is different. If it was a private land owner, if it was a private land owner that would require, if they met the requirements of having to go through the, that other board, then we may help them on some other ways, but a private owner would have to go through that board, from the way I understand it. So, you know, Industrial Development Authority land on our industrial parks and things like that. But if it's a private land owner, then they would have to go through and meet the criteria that's set out by y'all in the, in that other board.
But if it's industrial development property, you wouldn't have to go through that?
That's my understanding.
Well, you would if it was some type of a heavy use in the industry. Like if it was some kind of industry that we felt was going to pollute or bring a, you know, some type of awful odor or whatever.
We would never even entertain it.
No, but if you did, you know, just say we had a boy that did that, that's what this board's for.
We could.
They could come in and, and evaluate that for the citizens and say, look, it may pay $50 an hour, but, you know, it's going to destroy half the county, so that's, that's what that board is there for, you know, so.
The Industrial Development Authority, based on what they have, they have told, we, it would, if the project came to us, it would never have to go to them, because they would never approve it to go to them.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's kind of a failsafe both ways.
Yeah.
You know, we're not going to, they're not going to do anything that would be detrimental to environment that, that couldn't be navigated, I guess is a good way to, to put it, depending on what it is. And so I hope that answers your question. Yes, if, definitely if it was a private owner, if someone in Rising Fawn had 150 acres and they wanted to sell it to someone, it, they wouldn't even have to call the Industrial Development Authority. They wouldn't even have to call, and, but they wouldn't be able to take advantage of any type of the assistance that any of the agencies would be able to help. And they could work out a private deal, and, but they would still, by county ordinance, have to go through that other board, even though that there, it's not, government doesn't have anything to do with it. I hope that, that, that answered.
It helps.
Answered you.
More information.
Do what?
It's more information.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and all of y'all know how to get in touch with me if you have any questions. You know, if you, if you hear something, just give me a call. I've, I've talked to several of you. You may have read something, heard something, somebody asked you something, I've tried to answer, and will always answer any questions that y'all may have, and anybody else that wants to call to be able to tell that. I will ask our chairman if he wants to say anything.
I'm good. I think you've covered everything. I appreciate your time and your efforts.
Thank you. We, y'all have done very well. I want to pat y'all on the back, because y'all set the board, and we have a great IDA board. They're very energetic, and they're very concerned about growing good paying jobs for the county. And they're, they're doing real well. So without, without y'all's help, we wouldn't have a board like this, so we're excited about that.
It's a good board.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank y'all.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, let's move down to the number nine. This is our Resolution R-20-23, the Agreement for Local Services Point Handup Program and Day County. Robin, I'll turn it over to you. I know you was in the office a little while ago, when we were talking about what, what we need to do on this.
So following our last meeting, we had a conference call, telephone conference call, Ted, Don, and myself, with Megan Martin, the lady from ACCG, and kind of explained to her what we were doing and so forth. The state, I, I think she agreed with it, that there, the existing information about what you can and cannot do with the money is, is not well defined yet, and they are working with the state to get that more fleshed out. But she was in agreement that, you know, you could use funds for treatment programs. And so we had, she had suggested, and we did, we sent her a copy of the proposed agreement that we had, that had been drafted for hands up. She's going to want, redline that and get it back to us, get corrections or suggestions she has. And, and so we had the discussion with her a week and a half, two weeks ago, I'm thinking. And I've not gotten that back from her yet. I did leave a, a message for her, but I've not heard back from her yet. So we don't have that back from her yet, and I apologize for another month's delay, but we probably would be wise to do that, to get that back.
And she said it'd be a couple of weeks because of this holiday week hitting and all that, so.
She did.
Yeah, so it'd be, yeah. All right, so we just made a table.
I got something on my desk, Robin, while we're on the subject. The, we're talking about one specific fund. The, we're talking about one specific fund to take this out of the opioid crisis fund?
Yes, it would be out of the funds that we've received from the opioid settlement.
My further expansion on that question with government funding would be, there are other government funds that are going to Hands Up Ministry. I mean, I found twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars worth of expenditures that have went from another account, from Dade County Government, to this ministry. I want that question answered, if that's a problem with church and state also, because I know we had concerns. We talked about that.
Yeah, we can take a look at it and see.
That needs to be looked into because we've got a, we've lost a program with our high school, drug testing our high school and our seventh and eighth graders because of a lack of funding. Started in January. I've asked one school board member about it, Ms. Hartline. She was unaware of it. I was unaware of it until we were looking into the drug testing policy for the school buses. But that listed as one of the reasons, one of the funds that this money, some of these monies, that same fund that's come out of would have been enough.
But that's not treatment. That's.
But that's what I'm saying. No, but if it's okay out of one government fund, it would be okay out of both.
Yeah, that's true. I agree with that.
I worry about it for, I really worry about us not testing our high school students, but giving them another money to, which is definitely a government organization, our school system.
Well, those funds, though, were from.
Court.
Court-related matters. This is from an opioid settlement funds that have, which they are still defining how to use the funds.
And I understand.
But it's more for treatment of existing problems than it is identifying possible drugs, I guess. And that was a decision made by the sheriff, too. I mean.
Well, it's not our fund to control. I understand that. But it concerns me that we're giving them money. We're not, and we're canceling a program that's testing our high school students and our seventh and eighth graders.
Wouldn't that come out of the school?
No. It's a program that the courts have set up and it's paid for by the courts. And what I got told was this fund is getting very low and hideous. Me and Tommy went through it. But what concerns me is the twenty-three thousand five hundred that went to Hands Up.
So, the county funds this program for the school?
The court system, from fines and fees and from.
COVID depleted this because there was no courts. There was, you know, everything was shut down. So, there was no funds being played.
So, the court system funds it?
Yes.
And it's earmarked for that type of thing. It's stipulated for drug testing for students, well, curricular activities.
Okay, I see what you're saying now. I understand now. I didn't, I wasn't getting.
And that's been stopped. That worries me. I have two high school sons, grandson.
So, you're asking if the use of the opioid funds for that purpose is permissible? Or that would be a use for those funds?
Yeah.
I can check that for you.
And on both, both questions, for me, would be, is that church and state issue or not?
So, are those drug testing, those are for not court kids? They are for high school?
Extracurricular activities. Kids in sports or band, clubs, 4-H, anything that's extracurricular.
Yeah, anything.
Catch a problem before it gets too out of hand. The drugs are so poisonous nowadays. It just takes once sometimes, so. But if you catch them early, you might can help them.
Check it out and see what, you know, get an answer to his questions, and we'll have an answer by the next meeting on this other. Because one of the biggest questions, you know, that when we were talking to this lady, she'd done most of the talking, now trust me, and of course, Robin, but it was, it mentioned in her that the money couldn't be spent on any particular group, a religious type group. You know, it couldn't be like ministries or whatever. It has to be, you know, non, that's what I understood. And that's one of the biggest questions here, you know, to be sure from what she. And there were several questions you asked her, so it's going to be pretty interesting to see just what she comes up with, you know. Because this is a lady here with the state, you know.
And we do have other religious organizations that, like Seventh Day Adventists. I mean, they've done that since I was a kid.
And there again, you tie it back.
We sponsor one, how are we not going to sponsor others?
Well, we'll have some answers, you know.
Well, I think, I mean, depending on what the outcome is, it could be, this could be money that we could, like, do responsibly for anybody that. As long as it's in those lines. It's not a, it's a continuous until it runs out, right?
Yeah, and she clarified the other day, clearly stated that they, Hands Up is, I don't have that sheet in front of me, that they're a member of, what is it, REX that? That's right. She said those were two services that were clearly identified as authorized.
I didn't hear you.
What is it again?
Yeah, okay.
Those are acronyms for something, but she said.
Yeah, I've read that before.
She quoted those two things as clearly, they're good to go. Other counties are already doing that, Cherokee and DeKalb.
Well, we'll discuss it further with you and we'll get to this, get that back.
While we're on it, I'm really curious, where did this resolution, where did it come from? Who drafted it up?
I drew, I wrote that up.
You're the one who's proposing this resolution.
It came up as, you're talking about the resolution and the agreement?
This resolution that we're trying to discuss and talk about, where did it originate from? And who drew it up? Who asked it to be put on this?
I typed it up.
Who asked for it to be put on here? Who's backing this resolution?
I've put that out before y'all and never heard anything back that y'all never said not to. And no one ever should take it off the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with it as long as it's under the law and it's.
As long as we're fair with it, with the money.
When it came, I typed the resolution. I typed most of our, in fact, I typed all of our resolutions. And now, I run almost all of them by Robin, too. So, there's, as far as typing the resolution, I've typed every resolution since two thousand and seven, I'm aware of. And to clarify your answer, but I had talked to, I put that out to everyone, never heard anything back. I talked to, I know I talked to Ted, Robert.
We discussed.
I talked to all y'all about it. Didn't I talk to you about it?
You did talk to me. I'm just asking.
I talked to, didn't I talk to you?
So, let me re-ask my question then, since you want to talk about.
Didn't I talk to you about it?
Don.
Yeah.
So, let me re-ask my question then, since you wanted to talk about who typed it up. My question is, who is sponsoring this resolution? Who's the one that, you talked to us, but somebody's got to be, like, the fire department. I'm just asking, like, the fire department comes in, they won't splash money or whatever. They're the ones that do that. Who done this one?
I typed all the resolutions up from the standpoint of anybody in the community or a commissioner that proposes something, and so that's what I did.
Okay.
I think he's looking for the commander.
Who proposed?
Of the jail. Didn't he propose it?
No. Commander of the jail.
Well, whoever, who's the?
Yeah, you're, yeah.
The captain?
Yeah, that's who I'm talking about.
Yeah, I mean, because.
So, all these funds, I started receiving emails. Of course, we get emails from the federal government and hear rumblings roughly about two years before it ever become factual. And it's just one of them things, you just kind of wait and see, not everything washes out. I think I've mentioned it. It's been years back.
It was years.
It's two years ago.
But, and then, of course, you know, the official, what they put out as far as federal government, how it can and can't be spent, then it rolls out. So, I mean, does that answer your question? No?
You're good, though.
Okay.
But I think you came to Don, talked to him, didn't you? I thought you.
I mean, we've talked about this since the inception of the program.
That's what Phillip's looking for.
It was actually before because it was a good year to year and a half before I ever started seeing emails before, actual.
Settlement. That wouldn't have been any settlement at that time.
No, not at that time. It was just word of mouth, hey, these pharmacies are getting sued for this reason. And, you know.
Have you guys seen the benefit of what you're trying to accomplish? Yeah, that's what our conversation was.
Am I okay to speak to the earlier discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, so Drug Education, Drug Education Fund and the jail fund at the same time. It's not, it's not just the same funds. Through the COVID thing and like, I think Don said, we're not the only county. The income got cut fifty percent on those funds when they normally come in. So, that's part of what dropped it down. The money that was discussed as far as when it was donated out of that fund, I think was before right after or before COVID hit, so.
The last one for fifteen thousand dollars was in twenty-one.
Okay, the one prior to that, yeah, twenty-twenty-one, the one prior to that.
There was one in twenty-one, nineteen and seventeen.
Okay, so, I mean, it's not been within, it's been since twenty-seventeen. It hadn't been just all of a sudden. I will tell y'all.
I didn't mean to say that.
On, like, you take, for instance, like, the jail fund, it got hit too because it slowed down too. And we're starting to see a little glimmer of it's starting to pick up and hopefully will be used to regular income. And the drug test or the drug testing company that gets paid through the high school is out of that Drug Education Treatment Fund.
But that was canceled in January, correct?
I would have to refer to Tommy. Yeah, Tommy is the one.
Yeah, Tommy told me that, and we were on the phone.
And, you know, and I'll.
Ted was in the office with me when he told us that.
And you take, for instance, the jail fund, I've had to slow down on it. Normally, my education and training, instead of it being tax money, we usually pull that from, for the jail side, we usually pull that from the jail fund. So, it's, you know, fine money instead of tax money. That's one way to help the budget. So, I mean, it's just how we improvise. And, you know, if there's a need somewhere and there's a fund and it can be met. I mean, that's how we've always moved forward, so.
I understood him say that the reason it was poor because the balance was low. I mean, he didn't have the money to do it.
Right, right.
I mean, that's the reason it.
Just on the average, and I can't, as far as what average is on the date fund or the Drug Education Treatment Fund, I can't speak to the average. But at the same time, that jail fund, I'm used to the jail fund. I would typically try to hold anywhere from eighteen to twenty right there in case, you know, we had something that needed to be paid for in the jail or, you know, like I said, all of our training goes through that. The jail fund, when it become evident to me, it was, it went down to nine thousand, and that's when I put the brakes on everything. And then, at a different time, Tommy's like, you know, hey, what's going on with these funds? And we got to looking into it, and the other counties were fighting the same thing. And we're slowly, we're slowly moving back forward again. But it's all strictly court fines and fees that come out of the arrest and tickets that are written to both funds, really, the jail and the Drug Education Treatment Fund. It's not tax money.
And the one reason, it's not just that they just shut off the testing. The vendor changed the parameters of that program, and I think went way up on prices and stuff, so. There was, I mean, yeah, we were short with money, but there was a difference in opinion, too. So, it's not to say that they can't re-initiate something or start something, but.
So, and it's just like with inflation and everything else. So, I buy the drug test for the jail and for the sheriff's office and like investigations, any drug testing we do over there, I buy it through that fund. We're actually through two or three different funds, just to kind of split it up. And them drug tests have gone up. I mean, I, pre-COVID, I was getting one cup for roughly about five dollars, maybe a little bit less. And we're bumping eight now, eight per cup. So, it's like anything else that's gone up.
Do those cats just test one substance or do they test?
No, 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 no.
Because I took one today for a physical.
Yeah.
Then I can have my medicines. I have to take.
So, I can't speak to what the school tests for. But what we order through the sheriff's office, it tests for twenty different substances. It also will tell you if somebody's had alcohol in their system in the last three days. And then, it tests also for kratom and all that gas station stuff.
Same. It even does, which I was surprised it does, percentage of it, which I thought was pretty cool.
Because I just had, my doctor changed. I had to take a physical today. And for my medicines that I'm on, I have to take a drug test to make sure I'm taking my medicines and not selling them, I guess. But there are little tubes lined up all the way around that cup.
And ours is the same way. Ours is twenty tubes, twenty different substances. The normal is anywhere from like twelve to maybe fourteen or sixteen. But we have, we deal with, of course, inmates, probationers and all kinds of different stuff that we got to keep checking.
But that doesn't seem like that should be that much to test our kids, you know, forty. They were doing fifteen seventh and eighth graders and thirty high schoolers.
And like I said, you know, without.
That's all?
Yeah, so they were, they were just doing the extracurricular activity.
Yeah, but that would be for every sport, though.
Every month, once a month, right?
I can't, I really hate to speak to that without Major Bradford.
No, it's not random. My kids get tested.
The test is random, but the tests come every, I think it was every month. I could be wrong. Could be.
I hate to speak to that because that's more of Major Bradford's.
Yeah, it sounds low to me because each, you have to, every time you join a sport, you have to take a test. So, and then, then after you take that initial test, you have random testing.
Yeah, that's okay.
So, then that seventh grade, eighth grade on up.
I can tell you, my son played all four years before he graduated. And in all four years, I think he took maybe three, is all.
Well, that's, my kids were.
High school and wrestling.
All the time. I don't know why, but. I told Everett, are you sure?
It's a good early detection, good deterrent.
Right.
Because some kids love their sports more than their extracurricular activities than they do their.
And, you know, I think everybody in the room knows the heart of the sheriff's office.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we're here to support the community, you know, this problem of opioid use. Every, there's nobody exempt from it nowhere in the U.S., unfortunately. And, you know, every community, every commission, every sheriff's office, police department is, you're going to have to deal with it. In this community, it's my opinion and talking to some of the other counties around us. You know, we've got a good thing going. If you talk about, if y'all go to your meetings and you're around, check with some other counties and ask them about the jails and programs offered and, you know, resources, you know, that people that really want help, you know, there's something out there for them to step into and go to, you know. So, I mean, in that aspect, you know, we are blessed and Major Bradford, you know, of course, he, his set of meetings and mine are two different, we rarely attend together. But he said before, he's been in some of his meetings and, you know, as far as how the jails run and Hand Up and Hope House and everything that's involved, that it's not very common that you find that in the county. So, I mean, you know, it is something to be proud of. There is several, several different churches. It ain't just one church in the community. It's the Catholic, Methodist, Baptist, Pentecostal. Seventh Day Adventists. I'm not missing anybody else. So, it's not a, it's not just a one church, because this happens every Thursday night, and any help is appreciated, you know, one church may come out. One church may come out and sponsor the, the, the different, you know, for people that's going to see off. So that a way people can get off work, go in, feed your kids, go in and then sit down for counsel and get help.
Where's it, where's it held at each Thursday night?
Trenton Ministry Center.
That's behind the shopping center.
Yeah, it's a bulldog drive right behind, uh, like a day downtown. So it is, it's not, you know, it's not no big eyes and little hues or nothing like that, um. You know, it's not about any one person or any one church and, and, um, we wouldn't be necessarily for that. Um. And, you know, you try to remain as humble as you can. And do the best you can is all we can do, that's all you're responsible for at the end of the day.
All right, appreciate it, appreciate it, okay. But we'll, we'll wait till she gets back with Robin and we'll all see the results of what they, what they're actually, um, what we can spend it on, what we can't, and we'll go from there, so. Uh, let's move down to the number ten, this is our, um, R dash thirty dash twenty-three. Uh, this is some surplus property that they need to dispose of, what do you got, Don?
Man. It's a two thousand two Honda Rancher. CRX three fifty and a nineteen ninety-three Yamaha Kodiak four hundred. Uh, both are like four-wheelers.
They are, yeah.
Through the sheriff's office.
Confiscated property, right?
Seaters in the past, I don't know where they.
They've been down there a long time.
How they ended up with them, but anyway, they're, put them out for, um.
They're extremely old drug seizures.
Yeah, okay.
I come in, the sheriff's office two thousand eight and both of them four-wheelers were here when, when I come to work here in two thousand eight.
Yep. So. Anybody got any questions on that?
I put them on grab deals.
Okay, you know, good deals, so, all right. Move down to, um. The amendment to the hotel motel accommodations excise tax, that's ordinance number zero eight zero three dash twenty-three, uh, Don.
Okay, when we passed the hotel motel tax, excise tax, uh. That was July fifth, two thousand eighteen. Uh. We draft, like many ordinances draft. Look at different counties and cities around the state, of course, and Robin did, uh, list the take, the tax commissioner. As under registration of lodging operator, the certificate of taxing authority. And then the, who would, the tax remitted section. And then the transfer of funds, but we've been doing that a hundred percent, that our office, the county, county administrative office, so. I would, uh, we're about to, uh, update, we're about to, to, uh, initiate the contract, you know, that we approved two or three months ago. To monitor, uh, hotels, motels, operations in Dade County a- as far as short-term rentals. And I'd just like to start out fresh with the, with the clean ordinance because if we change it later. I don't want the decline to say, well, you changed this, now we're gonna have to update the software or something, I don't know, I mean. To me, because we don't use the tax commissioner's office and, and in fact, we've asked the tax commissioner and they're not interested, she's not interested in, in doing it now. Robbie can talk to you about the reasoning behind what we did, so.
The, 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 the reason it was drafted like that was, uh, because I was concerned of what we would do if someone was not paying taxes. And, uh, who would go in and enforce that and frankly, in my mind, the tax commissioner is better suited for that than the, uh, board of commissioners and the reason being is because. The tax commissioner is, uh, under, you know, under Georgia statutes, the ex officio sheriff, and so she can take action to enforce that. So that was the reason I originally did that, uh. You know, and, and that concern aside is my understanding, we might have been doing it that way, we've not been following that way. So really, that's up to you all if you want to, uh. Amend this to conform to what we're actually doing or, but anyway, that's why it was done like that originally.
And when Georgia law changed a few years ago, they sent the taxing information to Dade County. Dade County, Georgia, Dade County Commission, and so we get the checks. It never, it never goes through the tax commissioner's office and then the, from there onto us. And really, I just, I mean, I didn't want there to be any confusion from any other entities in town to think, oh, they get a portion of that too, because they're not entitled to. Excise tax that, for, for this particular excise tax, meaning the school board or anybody else. So, uh, that is the reason. It's just to update, it's just to clean it up because we're actually in violation of our own ordinance right now by the way we're doing it. But we're doing it and we're doing all the work and. So.
We're gonna change it from the tax commissioner to the commissioner, that's what it is, because of where, okay.
And we do this with other things like, uh, uh, electrical permitting, uh. Then we have the financial, um, institution tax, uh, where they submit that directly to the county. Yeah, insurance premium taxes are ultimately submitted to the county, so. You know, those don't go through, those are all excise taxes and they do not go through the tax commissioner either, but. Because if we had a problem, we would just take action based off of this and go through the courts, which would be. To begin with, the magistrate court, because there's a section here talks about that, how that, you know, what happens if someone doesn't, fails to. Pay their hotel motel tax.
Okay.
It does, uh, it does include increasing this from twenty-five to a hundred. And then if you're late, it was seventy-five, that's basically three times what it would be. To get the certificate, operating certificate. And because you don't want to make money off of this, you just want to break even and that would, that puts us closer to breaking even, I'm not gonna say we're gonna break a hundred percent even, but. It's gonna put us a lot closer to it. Some counties, that, that fee annually, I mean, they're. Was it two thousand dollars? I put it in that email to y'all, can't remember that commissioner, he's a commissioner that's, but that's. We're not looking at charging anybody that kind of money for a certificate in Dade County at least.
So, in, in my mind, it's just how, how you all want to do that, I mean, I, I don't see a legal. Uh, other than the concern that I expressed, I don't see any other legal reason to do one, one thing or the other. The other thing I would point out though is this is a ordinance, so it will take two readings and so if you all. Want to pass on first reading and then take the next month to review it and think about it, it's gotta come back up a second time anyway, so. I would throw that out.
I'm, I'm good with it, I think it should change because it is going this direction in this office.
Cause that's what he's doing now, that's what, that's what we're doing, Lamar, what you saying?
Yeah.
We're talking? We're not, I'm just getting a opinion.
I'm good with this, when we do this though, I'm assuming, say. Say if I was gonna build a place that was gonna house thirty or forty people and they come in, they want an operating certificate. Do, do I get this before I build my place or do I get this afterwards?
After.
Okay.
Because you may choose to be a long-term rental, not a short-term rental.
Okay.
And if it's long-term, it doesn't apply.
Right, this is just for short-term and, and what, is it thirty days classified as short-term or are we ninety days?
Not thirty.
Thirty. It's right under that six weeks.
You found?
I'm good with it, yes.
Mr. Pough, okay, I'll put that on the consent agenda there. All right, let's move down to number twelve, this is our twenty twenty-three millage rate schedule. Don? I know we heard from Angie there a little while ago on email, at least they're actually working on our.
Right, so, um. I'll give that to you. We have published online and a schedule. Which would, uh, put our, our possible meetings, first advertising, our first and second public hearings. And what we're talking about here is for the, uh, passage of, and adoption of a millage rate for Dade County. In the unincorporated and the incorporated area. And so, just to clarify, incorporated means the city's boundaries and unincorporated is everything outside the city of Trenton. Uh, that would have begun the first, I'm sorry, the July twentieth. And then our second, third final meeting would have been on Thursday, the July twenty-seventh, but. If she's unable to get this information, what's we call the consolidation sheets back to us by tomorrow. At noon, there's just not enough time to calculate this millage rate and have it audited. Initially, and then do all the necessary paperwork, because there's several forms involved, as y'all may recall. Uh, and I like to have multiple people look at the forms because one error throws it all back and you have to start over. And we've only had to do that one time in fifteen years and it's not fun. Um, so, we, if you look on the backside, there's a late schedule and all this does is pushes it off one more week. And it still puts us, uh, approving it the same day ultimately, August third, but we just have to back that last meeting up to five instead of it. At five-thirty, and then the school board tip, I think the school board, school board told me. They would be ready also at five-thirty that day, so that's why we put special call meeting to consider adoption. A final millage rate and authorized tax collection of schools' millage rate. Uh, at five-thirty on August the third, so instead of the twentieth. Um. The twentieth and the twenty-seventh, it moves everything through the twenty-seventh of July and August the third. So, there's nothing really to vote on, I can't really tell you what we're gonna do until we get. You know, the millage rate information and that, so what's happened so far, as you can see through here. Uh, it, they, uh, the digest was completed back in April, we went through the forty-five day process through the board of, uh, assessors' office. Through the assessment notices being mailed and then last Monday or Tuesday was the last dated to, uh. File any appeals, so we actually did successfully get everything uploaded. Actually on Wednesday and then Thursday, everything was forwarded to the, uh, vendor that. Tax Commissioner Angie Galloway uses. And they are a new vendor, Carroll County somehow beat us to the punch, which I don't understand how, but that's beside the point. And so they're already working on Carroll County's, if they get it finished tonight, then it's possible to have ours done tomorrow. And again, if, if I can work with the Dade County Sentinel because they're our legal organ to publish everything, then we'll stick to this schedule. But there's no rush, I mean, we want to do it right and, and I feel like that, you know, either, either schedule's gonna be fine. And tax bills should go out on time and we're hoping to have them out by as early as September first. Which allows plenty of time for people, uh, to, uh, get their taxes paid well before November fifteenth, I think is the deadline.
All right. Any questions, Don? Okay, if not, I'll go in and we'll, uh, adjourn the, uh.
What, the special?
Oh, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, Robert, yeah, he did.
Wasn't nothing, Rob. I just wanted us to take a little time, very little, because everything run along, but. We've been talking about recyclables at the transfer station for two or three months. And. I've got the church and people look at me and say, so y'all are closing the transfer station? I don't know why people gets on social media and that was never mentioned, but that's the take they take on it. First of all, to clear that up, that we're not talking about closing our transfer station, our collection of, of, uh, garbage trash throughout the county. But we have been talking about the loss of money on cardboard and other things that we're recycling. And, uh. We just need to make a decision on what we're doing instead of, you know, and at some point. And it's nothing, if we stop recycling altogether, it's nothing, you can't start back and, you know, if there becomes a market for it. But what's happening, people that had their market for it, were bringing cardboard, for instance, down to our transfer station and dumping it, talking about businesses. Why would they do that? They had a market for it, but that market went away. So they found that the cheapest way to get rid of it was to take it and dump it on the county and let the taxpayers then pay to send it on. So we have taken steps in that direction with some of the larger, uh, I guess, dumpsters of cardboard. But so we get on one page on this and what, whatever we're gonna do with it and, because so many people. We've talked about it in two or three different ways and people are still not sure, are they taking recyclables? If they are, are they going to the recycling centers from Dade County or are they being pulled out over here out of the bin? And taken over and put in the dumpster, and if that's what we're doing, then we're just causing ourselves extra work by doing it to start with. Plus, there's no market for a lot of it and a lot of it is. Monica Mosley was in here two years ago and told us about the Chinese thing and the dirty plastic and all that, people putting everything in it from tobacco spit to. Uh. Needles where they do their, you know, the diabetics putting needles in milk jugs and using that as a disposal and then you're putting it in, I want somebody to use it. So there's been a lot of things that have happened over the years, but just for, we just need at some point decide what we're gonna do about it. And. Put it out for the, for the citizens to see and then post it down there that until further notice, there would be none. Or take it back and as we have been going and just let it go and there'd be no difference, so. But the fact that we're not close, I did want that statement made, we are not talking about closing our transfer station, not at all, we can't. We got.
I was garbage.
Always, it's gonna be here as long as there, there's a world, but we're only talking about the recyclables, cardboard, tin, aluminum. Plastic, I guess, is basically the, and newspapers. That there's really no market for in our area anywhere, anywhere, so.
Mr. Hartland, you don't comment, let's go around the table on it, I mean, of course.
I always, did we start charging the businesses for nothing?
We already.
We're doing that?
And we, we took that out, we sent all of them that were, because they were loading this stuff on cardboard.
How long, how long we've been doing that?
A few months.
Fits, yeah, yeah.
A few months.
Actually, not quite two months. You know, two months, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that making any difference in the amount of money we're losing?
It, it does. I, I have a problem with losing. So, with the word losing, um, because this is a. An entity that we give the county, so it's a service, but, go ahead. I don't want to interrupt you, interrupt you.
That's my thing, I'd like to do that long enough to see if it's gonna make much of a difference, but if not, I mean, if we don't have any order to take it. And we're taking it in and then taking it right up here and putting it in a dumpster, then there's no point in taking it at all.
I got comments on that too, so.
So.
But we'll go around.
Mr. Lowry, like. And we're not taking a vote, we're just, that's just my opinion, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
My biggest problem is we can't get good information, I mean, I've asked, I've asked Billy. Three or four different times. Give me a number, tell me a flat number that that recycling center's costing us. You see what we get. Something Don needs to help him with, I think, or somebody financial. Cause it's, it's all over the board, I mean. Get told it's anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a lizard at the recycle station. If it's that much, we can't afford to do that.
Not, not to interrupt you either, but so for close to eight months to a year before. A few months ago, uh, I had been working on it, so, uh, the office, the commission office has helped tremendously. We do have those numbers, um, now, uh, I'm not, we had a meeting with Billy, he should have those numbers too. But, um, it was put in the paper, the numbers, so it's not that amount. Um, you're looking at maybe two thousand to twenty-five, probably a month. Um, I'd have to do some calculations, let me, let me get you a better number than that. So, we're talking about ninety divided by. Yes.
So, while she's calculating, let me just answer a little tidbit. You should be able to just take the revenue that we get for recycling, subtract out the expense and that's what we, I mean, that's what it costs. That's the net cost to the taxpayers.
I'm getting the revenue.
Oh, there's revenue.
Yes, there is revenue.
It's on our reports every month, yeah.
I want to bring it down, so.
Yeah, there's.
Revenue, it's just not.
We've been getting revenue.
It's not enough revenue to cover the cost, the cost of, I think what we need to do. If whatever we do with this, we need, when we're talking about a truck driving up there to do it, we need to look at something like the IRS mileage, not just a truck and a driver.
We did all that, we, we've done all, we've looked at the truck, we've looked at the gas, we've looked at the electrics, lights. The pole. Building, the person that runs it, the insurance, we have all those numbers. Um, and. It, it's still, it's, it's not, I have a problem with losing money, it's still. It's still something that is offered to the county, so I don't consider it as a, as a loss. The loss is where the cardboard is not costing this much, it's costing this much now. And that was our big moneymaker. So, is it, has it ever made money? At one point, it did make a little bit of money, but it was not enough that it was like, "Oh, we, we got a huge moneymaker." It was enough to, to kinda break it even, but it's, it's not now. So, and then when you talk about recycling, you've got to talk about newspaper, cardboard, plastic, oil, tires. Those are, are all things that, that are considered recycling, that we recycle. White, white item, is it white items? Is that what it's called?
Refrigerators.
Yeah, refrigerators. And we actually, we make money off of the, the white, white.
Some of the scrap.
Scrap, tires. We haven't went up in price on tires in a long time, so we could look at that. You know, so it's a big, it's a big.
Walker County today, and there's our five fifty for a tire without a rim, tire car tires, car trip.
Yeah, and ours are two.
Ours are, I think three is what I, could be. And then it was fifty cents if it was still on the rim, so it'd be six dollars for, if it's on the rim. I called Walker County today, couldn't get a hold of the two sir Chattanooga. But that's my biggest concern is.
Well, Billy's latest number.
Twenty-five thousand or is it a hundred and twenty-five thousand?
It's, it's close to.
Makes a big difference.
It's close to nine, ninety a year.
Ninety thousand a year.
We're losing.
Well, it's not a lot.
We're not, we're not making.
Not recovering if we don't want to lose it. It's costing us ninety thousand dollars a year to provide this service for the community.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
If we weren't wearing it the right way.
And it's not like it could never start back. If a market comes back for it.
Exactly. And also along with that, though, you have to think about how it's being operated. Is it being operated correctly? Are we, you know, it took a year for me to get these numbers and work on, on what, how, how this was operating and looking. So are we operating it correctly or is there things we could do better to make it run better? Have we called these companies and said, "Hey, can we get better rates? What, where do we need to do? What do we need to do? How do we need to do it?" We haven't done those things. So, for me, it's, it's a bigger picture and a lot more work than just it, cardboard's not taking, costing this much anymore.
Well, I mean.
Ninety thousand, I wanna lose, so that's just, take it for whatever it's worth.
Robert?
Well, I've just said how, I mean, it's just, it's just to decide what we're gonna do for the, for the public or not doing, either not do anything or decide what we are gonna do until further notice. But if it's in a, if it's ninety thousand, that's a pretty good chunk of money to not be recovering.
Well, here's the numbers for the transfer station. So, and the transfer station is really within about a thousand dollars, either breaking, a breaking even. And this is gonna be in my report tonight.
That's what goes across the scales.
So this is pretty much, if you break this down for like six months, this is like a half of, half of a year right here. And this is pounds and this is tons. And, you know, so, so we're give, we're doing this, we're, our other part, portion of it is a service that we would not discuss taking it away and it, it doesn't make money, you know, so, so that's just, that, that's my thoughts, you know. So, and I feel like the transfer station, and I'm working on it and we've talked about it, it needs to be rerouted a little bit to get that, those numbers up that we're actually making some money off of the transfer station. So, you know, it's, it's a big compelling picture that's.
Well, we just need to, you know, between now and our August meeting, 'cause now, you know, really we need to, but we need to be able to come in here and decide whether we're gonna actually, for six months, cut it off, you know, cut the recycling and until we, until something, maybe it'll pick, maybe it'll pick it. Right now, though, you know, we are, it's, it's roughly, and I've, I've looked at the numbers more than many times, but ninety thousand is a good number. I mean, that's what we call it, whether we're losing it, that's what it's costing us to, to rec, to recycle, is, is non-recoverable. I mean, right now, because there's not any body behind it. In fact, it's gonna get to a point where they're gonna pay us, we're gonna have to pay them to bring, to take it.
Yeah, but that ninety thousand too, that does not include tires, oil and white appliances.
I thought the appliances was in it, but no, but, yeah. Anyway, we'll just, we'll get serious. Be prepared, be prepared next month to come in here.
Where are we having to truck it to now? When we have, can we still take it to Chattanooga or is it having to go?
It's Chattanooga.
Still taking it to Chattanooga?
Mainly Chattanooga, yeah. Except for the tires and of course, they have to pop out trucks on it and, yeah. Y'all, that'd be something to be thinking about.
And there is problem, there is problems there with, there is problems with recycling, stuff being put into the recycling. We've all seen it. There is problems with recycling being put in the garbage that doesn't need to be, that, those are all, they are problems. They are, it's real, it's, and that's operations, so.
I read, I was reading what Robert said. Been reading a lot about recycling and plastics and cardboard in our landfill, but I was reading, I was thinking about what you said. If somebody puts, and say decide, you know, drinking bottle in a water, a recyclable bottle, plastic bottle, it can ruin the whole batch of plastic that that's in, because those chemicals spread throughout that whole batch of plastic. A lot of recycling, and I don't know why, or I do know it's causing money, but I don't know why we don't have a deposit, like some states have, where you would guarantee that bottle would go back to the recycling, just like we used to when we was kids. You didn't see a Coca-Cola bottle alongside the road very long, 'cause.
Got three cents for it.
Yeah, I think we got a nickel back, Tom, over.
Yeah, one half.
Yeah, we got a nickel. Nine, four, five Coke bottles, you had a candy bar in the club.
It looks like we got fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Not much. That used to be sixty thousand dollars, which again, sixty's not that much, but it has dropped a lot. And Monica Mosley of Republic Services would sit here tonight and tell you, it's only gonna get worse. But she would also say, if you can go out and find that end user, the person that wants to buy the plastic, the number three whatever, the number two this, or the yellow, they'll, sometimes they will make arrangements to pick it up for you.
They will.
Sometimes they'll buy it from you, but you gotta find them. And it takes time and energy for somebody to go out and hunt that person. But once you do, you know, it could be great. Think about Amazon, how many boxes they produce? I mean, where are they getting it, right? I mean, you know, go to the post office here around December the thirteenth, oh my gosh, it's all Amazon packaged boxes, it looks like Box City in there and, so I mean, I, you know, where do they buy their boxes? I don't know, but.
But then it's cheaper for companies, especially drink bottles. It's cheaper for them to buy raw material than it is to recycle and that's, that's why it's happening.
Okay, let's just, let's just give it some thought and be ready, you know, to make a decision on it, if we got to, on one way or the other, whether we wanna do it or not and, and we'll, come to the August meeting, we'll make a decision on it. Any other thing? Not, we'll be in adjourned or work session and go right into it. Take about a five minute break and we're going to our meeting.
Oh, you wouldn't do me that, would you?
It looks just like mine.
Go, go Savannah. That's where mine.
You got the red light blinking up here.
Yeah.
Right here.
I see.
If the red light's blinking.
There you go.
Yep, got it man. Alright.
Give me just a second Ted.
Do what man?
Give me just a second, I'm trying to get this thing to open up. I have to go to, sometimes I have to go to open it. Sometimes I do, sometimes I don't.
You ready little man?
Just give me a minute. How you been doing this? Open it up here I guess.
Okay, just leave that, do it again. I'm gonna do better computers. Let me give them a minute, just trying to.
Hmm. That's not it. He's yours on, he's yours on over there?
Yeah.
Go to the commissioner, go to the reports and see if I can see mine, if I can, I'll worry yours and that.
On his report, on the.
Report, see, but no, here, he came up.
You're talking about Papa?
Okay.
Alright, we'll go ahead in the call meeting order and say, um, as always, um, before we get started here, we ask, uh, Robert Goff here, the lady send prayer and pledge allegiance, Robert, if you would, and everyone stand please.
Thank you, let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you again for letting us be here tonight, we thank you for where we live and our families, our homes, our friends, just everything Lord that we have that makes this home, we thank you Lord for this commission and for these that are here tonight, those that are listening at home and will listen later, for the citizens of this county, that again make it a great place to live and to raise our families. Father, we pray as always that you would bless what we do here tonight, it would be the best of the benefit that we can bring to this county. And Lord, we thank you as we ask you to bless our nation, and we just come through this holiday week, commemorate our founding, and Father, we just pray that you continue to bless the United States of America, its military, its law enforcement, its teachers, uh, its citizens, Lord, that we would just, uh, begin to see just how blessed we are, and that we would turn to you and give thanks for that, for all this, we ask in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Robert. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Dade County Board of Commissioners, which takes place at the same time on the first Thursday of every month, proper notice this meeting was given to our legal origin, Dade County sent on, it has also been posted in our hallway, uh, of the administrative building. At this time, I do need a roll call, Mr. Lowery.
Present.
Talk line.
Here.
Goff.
Here.
Mrs. Bradford.
Here.
The chair is present. Move down to number two, anyone here tonight want to talk to us tonight, come up to the mic, uh, give you five minutes there to tell us who you are and, uh, and, uh, okay.
I am Jennifer Blair, um, and, uh, I want to just, uh, start by saying, uh, thank you Commissioner Bradford for, uh, your investigative efforts, um, as well as your advocacy for the service that is, um, the transfer station and the recycling. Um, it will likely not surprise any of you that I care deeply, um, about this issue, um, and I think that it's important to remember, um, that while a line item on the county budget is extremely important, um, to our citizenry and, uh, to this board specifically, um, the topic of resources boils down to not just money, so yes, there is an economic expense associated with the way in which a community deals with and separates or doesn't separate their resources, um, whether that's lumping it all together and calling it waste, um, or separating it into things which can be reused or repurposed. Uh, metal, for example, can be infinitely recycled, um, glass is the same way, infinitely recycled. Um, cardboard and paper, along with other, uh, biodegradable materials like kitchen scraps, can be composted and turned into nutrient-dense topsoil, which our farmers, um, and gardeners desperately need. Um, so I think that there are ways to approach, uh, what could be seen as a problem of, of the waste stream in really creative ways, um, that are beneficial, not only in a monetary sense, um, but also otherwise. Um, I would also just like to point out that, um, if we do discontinue our recycling options at the transfer station, all of those materials don't go away, we still as a community have to decide how we're gonna deal with them, which again could be lumping them all into one container and shipping them off to a landfill, uh, but landfills are extremely expensive, and they're also problematic in other ways. Um, even once they're closed, um, they have to be monitored and regulated indefinitely, um, and then you have to find a new location to which you can send all of those landfill-bound materials. Um, so I just think that those considerations are worth mentioning, uh, within the context of this decision. Um, we do, if I understand correctly, um, utilize a landfill, Sand Valley, is that correct? The landfill that we utilize?
Yeah, in.
In Sand Valley, Alabama, sat down in Collinville, yep.
Mm-hmm.
That's it, that's where Oliver, Oliver Goldridge lives, yeah.
And so, I'm curious, do, uh, do county employees actually take it to that location, is it picked up?
Picked up, it's contracted, you know.
Yeah, contracted. And do we know what the life expectancy of that landfill is?
A hundred years, they got another hundred years.
Another hundred years.
They've had up to feet they bought, uh, from what I understand, when the lady was here before, they actually got another, um, four hundred acres that they bought, so there's another hundred years.
Mm-hmm, okay, so, um, you know, just to be clear, the grandchildren of, of you gentlemen will be having to decide what to do with our materials, discarded materials, um, in that timeframe, when, when that landfill is closed. Um, and that landfill will then again have to be, uh, monitored and regulated indefinitely, because oftentimes, um, even when sealed, they leach, um, very dangerous and toxic, uh, pollutants into the environment. So, I just wanted to sort of expand the conversation a little bit, because, um, I think it's reductive, um, to imply that, uh, because there's a monetary expense associated with recycling, that it, um, as you so aptly pointed out, that that's a loss, because, um, there are other considerations, um, that are.
And we will, we'll look at, we're gonna look at everything, because it's something, you know, we've not had this problem since we started recycling. We've always kept it going, you know, I mean, for years, we, so that's, we're not just gonna make a drastic decision, but, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna look at every, everything, pros and cons, you know, yeah.
I, I, I wholeheartedly believe that, and, um, and I appreciate that consideration, I just wanted to, um, as a concerned citizen, uh, make a comment, so.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Part of the problem is big money, is big factories making, one of the number one producers of plastic bottles is Coca-Cola, but yet they give more money to keep America beautiful than any other organization, that keeps them, keep America beautiful off their back. You know, I've, I've read all about this since we've been going through what we are, about.
It's hugely problematic, and, uh, you know, from the, from the manufacturer's side, as you indicate, it's, that, that's a very real culprit, and also on the consumer side, you know, consumers need to get a clue, and they need to be, um, appropriately, uh, disposing of the materials that they choose to consume, you know, we, we go to the store and we make these purchases, um, based on the price tag and based on the contents, but we should also be making purchases, um, based on the container. Um, those are, those are very real everyday decisions that every single individual, um, with a dollar in their wallet can, can make. Um, so I think that.
And it's fixable, that's what's a shame.
It absolutely is fixable, absolutely.
But it's cheaper to use raw material than it is to recycle.
It's cheaper, um, in certain ways, in other ways, it's more expensive, I mean, to cut down, uh, a forest to create, you know, virgin paper is, is very costly, um, in terms of, um, all kinds of things, habitat loss, carbon sequestration, you know, the ways in which we utilize our resources and then, uh, do or do not utilize them at the other end of that, uh, sort of linear waste stream, is, is really something that we should all be reconsidering, um, as, as representatives, um, and also as, uh, consumers and individuals.
Yeah, thank you.
And I, I offer anybody to call and give me their opinion, and so.
I appreciate that.
I wish, I hope, and I hope, anybody that feels strongly called, give me, whether it's either way, either way, I would like somebody to give me their opinion.
Okay, anyone else? Feel free to come up, I mean, it's just, you know, I mean, Audrey, you got anything you want to add tonight or anything, I mean, we don't have a crowd here tonight, so, you know. Okay, I mean. Do what now? Well, you were outside running, you're running.
Yeah, she done had her time.
Okay, well, move on then, uh, but we will, we're not gonna just jump into this, it's a big decision, and it's, you know, so we'll.
Well, we've been working on it for a long time.
For a long time.
I mean, it just kinda came up now, because we do have all the numbers, and there is a lot of complaints, and so it's not anything that we have put lightly or have not looked at, um, since I came into office, we've been looking at it, we, Ted and I have talked about rearranging things over there for better results, so it's not anything that is, it is lightly looked at, looked at, it is def, we are looking, lots of people are looking at all the information.
Alright, we'll move on, just, do what now? You what?
She does have some.
Oh, good, go ahead. Wait a minute, come up here.
Just a, a quick thing, um, Christmas in July, I guess you'd say, actually, uh, met with the Sheriff's Department last week, and we discussed the Christmas parade and the Christmas crossing, because they want to coordinate that along with the Christmas parade. So we have set December ninth, the second Saturday of December for the Christmas parade this year. And the Sheriff's Department will be doing the Christmas crossing on December the ninth, over here in the gazebo park. Um, and the timeframe they're looking at is maybe two hours prior to our parade. And this year's theme will be Christmas movies, for anybody that wants to start on it early, Christmas movies. So we'll send out more information, but it's, we're moving it mainly because of the SEC playoffs, that first Saturday of December, a lot of people wants to, uh, be at home or whatever to watch that game, especially when it's some of our, our teams that's playing in it, so we are going to shoot for the second Saturday, December ninth, for the Dade County Christmas parade, sponsored by the Bank of Dade.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move on, um, let's see here, we got that, Mr. Lowery, you wanna go ahead with your report?
Okay, the call, the nine-one-one call activity report, or they say this is all of June, we had two hundred and six emergency services calls, this AMAS, AMS, we had two hundred and seventy-nine fire department calls, police calls were twenty-two, eighty-two, so the total calls for the month were twenty-seven, sixty-seven. It's down a little bit, believe it or not, but that's good.
It's a good thing.
So it's down a little bit, that's good, and then the eight-nine-one-one dresses were seventeen, for a total of sixty for the year, of every month added, for this year's been sixty. So, we keep up with that. Ted will probably report some more on this too, but we made progress on the steel and Gwen Road leading out to Belt, emergency exit for the folks who live on the north end. Rain, as Philip can attest, is really holding things up, so we're doing the best we can. I've had multiple calls, and I know Ted has, about the traffic on two ninety-nine and, and the right-of-way being cut off. Uh, it was last fall, wasn't it Ted, we, last fall, me and Ted rode around with Rex, Harrison was with us, and two people from the state. They, they told us they'd get the right-of-ways cleaned off, but they're still hanging out in the road. And we know how, all we can do is, I asked Ted, may have some more to put on this, but.
Yes, it, we, you know, I met with them again last week, and they'll be back at the state people, be back up this following week, but they gotta do something about this traffic. I mean, I don't know, I mean, it's just a state highway, what do you, you know, and it's, I was in it the other day, almost an hour just to get from interstate down to get off, get on eleven, and, 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 you know, they, there's, they say they've got engineers working on it, they're looking at it and all, they come up with everything from, um, a roundabout to a, you know, but, but this, it's getting, it's getting worse and worse, you know, and so.
I mean, and it's not just during the week, it's a Saturday and Sunday.
And then we got the tourists, you got summer here, and you got these people trying to get home to, from work and get, you know, it's just, I mean, it's, it's bad, and.
And I think people were worried when they heard, I don't know if it was talked about, or about, maybe a new business coming to two ninety-nine, the water line that the water companies.
Oh, yeah.
Trying to put out of the freeway, maybe a new business coming. I don't know what they're gonna do one day, if they get a new business with traffic in there, a two-lane road.
It'll all have to be put together, that, that'll have to be involved in the whole decision of everything.
Yeah.
Because that's what, you know, that's, that affects the whole community, you know, but, but anyway, that's something, you know, we.
But we're not, we're not just taking phone calls and turning our head, we're begging and pleading, trying to get something done about the traffic, and now it's spilling over into Sligo.
Oh, yeah.
And they're coming off Morgable Ridge, and then that makes two ninety-nine, ninety-nine even worse, because there's not a break to get out.
Yeah.
But, those are state roads, and there's only so much we can do, and we're begging, I mean, we're begging and pleading, I don't mind begging if it'll help people, so.
Alright.
The last thing we've got, got is, it's on the transfer station again, I, I called and talked to them, we're trying to figure out what the best thing to do is for everybody, but don't blame the employees for what we're doing. Uh, I talked to the guy that runs the waste station, I think Brian, maybe today. And you won't believe how many people will, you know, just curse them out for decisions that we make. Some people don't like the idea of having to go to the hill to pay for non-household trash mattresses, and they'll back up out there to the dumpsters, and throw mattresses in that dumpster that we, they had to dig out. And then when, uh, if our employees say anything to them, it, it's about start to fight, so. If you gotta pick on somebody, call your commissioners, that's what we were elected for. We, we had to do what we've gotta do, but I served on the tax assessor's board, and it, it's pitiful the way some of our employees, and I'm sure this, I could say that nearly about every department, our sheriff's office, our E-nine-one-one, but I'm sure it's everybody, I know, I know it was in the tax board, and had, we've had people in our office that we've had to have the sheriff come and remove them, and so, take it easy on our employees, they work hard, they don't make a lot of money, and they're loyal, loyal employees, and I just hate to see people treated like that. And I'd be glad, you can call and curse me, I mean, that's what I took the job for, I guess, and, and see if I can help, that's all I have.
Alright, Mr. Talk Line.
Alright, at the sports con, or, yeah, at the sports complex, uh, last month, Stacey and them, they put out five hundred tons of sand on the soccer fields. Um, All-Star Baseball finished up, none of our teams went to state, twelve U's been practiced, twelve U baseball's been practicing, and, and they've played in a couple of select tournaments. They're, uh, planning a tournament to have in Trenton, uh, July the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, eight U through twelve U. Uh, and then there's some that's trying to find a fall league to play on. Soccer had a camp last week, and is planning on starting back in August with their, the fall soccer. I guess football's probably doing sign-ups at this time. And in the month of June, electrical inspections, we had twenty-eight. Uh, so like, so we had twenty-eight electrical inspections, but then in the month of June, we had seventeen nine-one-one addresses. So when we're running close to the same as how many addresses Alex is putting out a month, as we are in electrical inspection, so we're getting new properties every month. That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Goff.
Alright, I've, I've been kinda under the weather this month and don't know a bunch, I had a knee replaced on the twelfth, if you wonder why I'm hobbling around. But I'm getting around good, but they tell me, but they're not the one feeling it. Uh, we'd like to report, now last, last month, our splash was down to, to two hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars, back up this month, thankfully, to three hundred and thirteen thousand and eighty-five dollars, and that's a grade about, increase of about fifty-one thousand, sometimes it seem like there's no rhyme or reason for it, but we'll sure take it, when we can get that kind of increase month over month and, and not going back down, so thank you for shopping local, and again, whatever factors come together to make that, make that all possible. Uh, one thing we'd like to say, and, and Mr. Ross has, uh, left us for tonight, but you know, out at New Salem, and, uh, on Saturday, they had their fireworks, also sold some, uh, very good barbecue chicken and stuff during the day, and I know a lot of people went out to it and, uh, and enjoyed that, and then of course, on, on the, uh, the fourth of July, nineteen forty-five days, at the, uh, Jenkins Park across the road over here. And did like to thank all those people, there's no way of knowing who all of them were, but this, this is, takes months to put this stuff together. But, uh, when you get to go out and you see it, and you're a part of it, and you realize what it means to live in small-town America, and, and get to still enjoy these kind of things, and see all your friends and your neighbors, kids having a great time, so to whoever is involved in New Salem every year, uh, I know they were down this year because the probability of some bad weather that, uh, didn't happen, I don't think as bad as it could have, and also to those who put on the nineteen forty-five days, it's, uh, second to none, what we do here in Dade County and Trenton and all the people that are involved with it, so thank you for, uh, like Audrey talking about already, I wish you wouldn't talk about Christmas in July, but Christmas will be here before July, it'll be over, uh, the way it seems, but to live in that small town where you get to do these kind of things is priceless, so thank everybody that's involved for, with it.
Okay, Mr. Bradford.
Well, I have to agree with that, I, I was able to participate, I also have had surgery, so I'm kinda down on my numbers, but, um, it just really was fantastic, it was just, um, seeing all the people and all the people enjoying everything, it's, uh, it takes a lot to do that, especially on a hot day, so it was pretty awesome.
Um, I want to touch, just, I, I did not get the numbers for transit, but I just wanted to put that out there, uh, you know, in the senior center, um, I, I did not get their numbers this, this month, but I'm sure. put that out there, uh, you know, in the senior center, um, I, I did not get their numbers this, this month, but I'm sure they're still rocking and rolling. Um, we, like we've been discussing quite a bit, have been, um, working really hard on getting all of our numbers correct, getting, um, programs put in place, um, computer programs. So we finally got some, some good numbers of, uh, outgoing garbage, uh, totals, um, and it's, it's an average from, uh, you know, forty, forty, forty-five, uh, looks like a month going out. Um, so, you know, it is, what I do want to say about it, it, it is all kinda grouped together, and, you know, you do, recycling does affect the transfer station, and it's not a small task at all to look at, and it, it hasn't been abandoned, it's been looking at, we've been changing things, and and we may or may not come back next month and have a straight answer, because I think it is definitely an ongoing process. Um, and I do agree with Lamar, um, you know, these pe, we, we put in policy, and the people work the policy to the best of their abilities, um, and, you know, those people over there, they, it's hot, it smells, it's, you know, they're, they're working hard, that's their job, they take pride in what they do every day to get up to go there, so I definitely agree with, you know, have any problems, please call me, I'm pretty easy to talk to, um, you know, I, this is a big part of me since I came in, I'm, I'm, uh, I, I just kinda grabbed a hold of it, anybody's welcome, I mean, Lamar's been there, we're, we're all working on it, but it's just something that I kinda for some reason grabbed to, so, um, please call me with any problems or concerns, or ways to do it better, or, you know, anything like that, it would, it would be great.
Okay, good report. Um, I'll start off, we, uh, it's been like a quick month, I don't know, I don't even know where it's went here, you know, here it is July. We did host a meeting though here in, in this, uh, room with the A P D, they had asked, called a couple of months ago, and we had a couple of new people come up from our A P D, they're actually our, uh, enforcement, uh, people, uh, with Environmental Protection Division of the state of Georgia. Uh, had several contractors here, uh, and, um, it was pretty informative, a lot of rules have changed now with environmental uh, protection, uh, in, in the state of Georgia, uh, the way you actually, uh, permit a job, if you, anything over acre and a half, or acre, anything over an acre, uh, you, um, got a whole new process to go through before you actually start construction, and uh, they, they brought a lot of information with them, and we got some good phone numbers, contacts, our contractors did, where they can deal directly with these people. And, uh, so, um, it's, it was, uh, it was really a, a good, a good meeting, I know Philip, he attended, and, and, uh, it's pretty informative, and so, anyway, that, that's, that's pretty critical, because as Phil mentioned, you know, on his report, we've got a lot of things happening here, we've got a lot of a lot of houses, a lot of, uh, when he, when he talks about building inspections and electrical inspections and and, and Alex doing nine one one, uh, address, that's new, that's new properties that are being developed in this, in this, uh, county, and and if you keep up with this in the next few months, um, or have been keeping up with it, um, we're changing, you know, I don't care what the twenty twenty, um, census says or whatever, there's a lot of people coming in this county, and, and not a whole lot, not a whole lot leaving either, so but anyway, that's, that was pretty interesting, you know, to, to have those people up here, we, I've, I've met several times, um, virtually, with the, the D O T uh, this month, uh, on different things, mainly the two ninety-nine, uh, traffic issue up here, I'm, I'm trying to get them back in here next week. Um, and they've got, we've gotta get some answers up there, whatever they, they recommend, whatever they're gonna do. I mean, we have some input in it, uh, but not as much as you would think, it is a state highway, and they've got their own engineers, they've got their own way of doing things, and, and I think, I know they're aware now that, uh, there is a, a problem, I've, I've gave them pictures, videos, and the whole thing, so, I mean, um, this, you know, just have to bear with it and say it, of what they come up with. But something's gotta give up there, I mean, it's just, it's got to a point, and it's not just on Friday, used to it was on Friday evenings or whatever, now it's almost daily, especially if there's any kind of accident on the interstate, and they start diverting traffic, you know, you've got Sligo with trash trailers on it. You've got, you know, this, it's just, it's a scary situation, and hopefully, uh, in the next few months, we'll be able to iron that out with them and, and see what they're, what's going, what's going on.
You got them getting off in Marion County and coming down two ninety-nine.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's bad, and, but, um, and I, and as, as Lamar mentioned too, on our, our two, uh, kind of, uh, emergency roads that we're working on, we've got the one up on the north end, and we, we already got this one finished down here, because it's gonna be real easy, pretty easy, uh, at Vanguard, tying Clark Street into it, but that one up there, uh, the rain is just, it's just, it's a mess up there right now. Uh, we did, we were waiting on, uh, a structure to be moved, and they did get that moved last week. Uh, we're down at the main entrance to it, so if we can get maybe four to five days on that, I feel we'll be finished with that, and those people uh, will be able to get out, and, uh, since then, you know, since we even started, they've had, they've been blocked in probably seven times. Um, a couple of times over two, three hours, so, uh, we, I know they're looking forward to it, and, and they see the importance of it, but we're, we're doing all we can do on it, we can't control them of their nature, that's for sure. Um, been working with the I D A, I go with it pretty quick, with Evan a lot, Evan's doing a lot of, a lot of work, he's doing a good job. Uh, it's amazing how many, um, people or how many industries now that they've actually, uh, contacted, and we've got really two really good, um, good hits there that he didn't really go into detail tonight, but really good, I mean, uh, high-paying jobs, and the, the problem's gonna be, you know, if they do, if either one of them locates whatever's finding people to work, that's what worries me, you know, uh, because we do have, uh, we, we're one of the lowest unemployment rates now in, in the whole state, I mean, not just in our northwest Georgia region, but when I got it the other day, uh, the white column is actually the people that are two percent and, and less or whatever, and there's only like five of those in the whole state, the counties that even compare to ours, you know, and, and northwest Georgia region, you know, we're, we're, of course, the, the lowest, so um, but anyway, it's, 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 it'd be, it'd be great to, to land either one of these people that they've been dealing with, because they, super high-paying jobs. Um, been dealing with also the D O T real quick on, uh, they're trying to, um, say that we actually, um, now are responsible for the excess, uh, coming into the interstate highway. Uh, where it comes up to the interstate bridges, now was before, you get off the interstate turn, you know, right or left, and you'll go with a rear wide section that's state maintained, and then when you narrow down into our county road, that's where, that's where you and I are supposed to keep up, you know, with the paving, keep that maintained. Well, the state's come out now, and they're, they're trying to say that they are, they've given that all the way to the county. So all these exits, it's got all the truck traffic and all, they take constantly having to maintain, they're trying to put that on the county, which is a lot, I mean, it's a tremendous amount, especially with the truck traffic coming in and out, so uh, meeting with them, that's another reason they're coming in next week, and, um, got some old, old plans in France that show where the interstate, uh, where the interstate, uh, access is, and where the state, um, actually maintenance starts, and where ours, uh, ours starts, so hopefully, we can get a remedy to that, because it's, we've got a couple of places, uh, one south to eight, it's terrible, I mean, it's dangerous, there's so many holes down there. So anyway, um, let me see if there's anything real quick, um, the, um, one thirty-six, I've mentioned this months ago, about how, you know, the, uh, the, um, uh, speeding issue and, and accidents up there coming across the mountain, and also trucks coming in, we got more and more. Uh, hopefully, that'll be taken care of in the next month or so, they're gonna actually double line all of that, all, all that through that stretch, stretch there where the restaurants, uh, are out there. Uh, with Geneva's, or the old Geneva's one thirty-six restaurants, hopefully, that'll, that'll come, that'll happen, and, uh, they're gonna put maybe, hopefully, some new signage up there too, to try to slow people down. Um, let me see here. Yesterday, I was in a meeting, uh, from eight-thirty for three hours, I guess, over in Walker County, um, with the D A, and also the Shannon, the sole commissioner, oh, not sole commissioner, but Shannon, their chairman, and then we had, uh, the, uh, sole commissioner of, uh, Chautauqua County, and, uh, Catoosa County, their manager also participated, and that, that is all over budgeting, uh, issues with the D A, D A's got a lot of problems keeping attorneys, they can't, uh, they come out, uh, of school, hire them, uh, work for us maybe six months, and realize that they can go to, uh, County and Floyd County, whatever, making twenty, thirty thousand dollars more than they're making, so it's really hurting the, the office as a whole, they're down six, six attorneys in our circuit, and, um, crime is not going, it's, it, it's kinda, you don't ever go down it, going up, and, and they, they don't really know what they're gonna do if, uh, if they keep losing people, because they, they're finding it harder to replace them, and, uh, so we did spend a lot of time discussing that, of course, we've already set our budget with the D A here. Um, we're, we're satisfied with, um, with what we're getting, you know, as far as, uh, our money's worth, but Walker, of course, is three to four times our size, Catoosa, and even Chautauqua, they're, they're, uh, but the two, the two big players are Walker and Catoosa, and, uh, they're kind of, well, especially Walker, kinda holding back on funding, you know, as per se, so I, I don't know, we, we just gotta get our, our heads together and then try to work it out, especially, you know, with the D A, we do have a new D A, and, uh, he's, um, he's real, he seemed like he's gonna be really good to work with, so, anyway, that's, um, that was a lengthy, pretty lengthy meeting yesterday. Y'all got anything else that y'all wanna bring up before?
I got one thing.
Okay.
I did, I've had a few phone calls about our elections building, we, uh, we did, we would have been starting on the dirtwork part of it, trying to get the grade cut down, um, Alex is working on getting stormwater for the project. We've got a preliminary drawing of the footprint, we don't have no elevations yet, and we do not have a projected cost at the time, but once we figure out, when we get the pad cut down and figure out how we're gonna situate the building, and how we're gonna make it work out, then we will look at getting the elevation plans for the drawing and get some of the preliminary costs, so we'll know what we're dealing with.
And really, we would have started, uh, but the Fourth of July celebration, we were gonna do it the week before, I think I might have mentioned this, I don't remember, but anyway, the, uh, we realized that we would have a whole area of parking torn up, uh, when the Fourth of July celebration would have been on Fourth of July, and so we backed up on that. Had we started it, it would have been decent weather, we would, we had that pad built, so if we can get just a few days of weather, uh, you know, we can get that get that taken care of, at least down to the grade, you know, so...
And our timeframe on it, we're, we're trying to get it completed before next year's election.
That's right.
That is our goal.
That's exactly right.
Completion date.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, anybody else got anything they wanna add? We'll move on, down. Our library, yeah, come on out. We got Laura Beth, but she's next, I think, next week.
Yeah, I had to make sure I was actually speaking.
No, you are.
I saw somebody else's name on there.
No, no.
All right, here are June stats, our door count was at two thousand six hundred and eighty-four, a lot of that in, increased is our summer reading program, we're, um, averaging about a hundred and fifty folks on Thursdays coming to our summer reading programs, and County Executive Rumley and Mayor Case participated, um, at one of our June programs, they read stories, and were there for our touch-a-truck out front, it was very well received, a lot of great comments, we've been getting feedback, asking, um, folks for their opinion on the different programs, and everybody loved that one, so we appreciate, um, y'all coming out. Uh, our circulations, um, oops, let's go back to stats, that's all right, uh, four thousand, over four thousand circulations. Once again, our computer usage, two hundred and fifty, printer use, four hundred and twenty-two. Our study rooms were used forty-seven times in the month of June with ninety-one folks, um, in those study rooms. Our meeting room was used four times with forty folks. If you look at our summer reading kids programming, we've had four programs, that second number, three hundred and fifty-eight children were there, we have door counters, we have our teen volunteers. Somebody's got the kids' door counter, and somebody's got the adult door counter. Carrie's two wonderful children, our, our teen vol, two of our teen volunteers, so I've got them on those door counters.
She's in deep thought over there, you know, if you know.
I know it, um, and the other number is our total number, five seventy-three for the month of June, um, entering the library for the summer reading. Um, the teen reading program, we've had two programs, we've had eighteen kids total between those programs. Our adult program, we've already had, we had three programs for adults in June, and we had twenty-four folks come out for that. We had a local author, she wrote a book called Rising Fawn, it was a novel that took place in Rising Fawn and in Atlanta. So she did a reading and a signing of that, and then she did a writing workshop, and a lot of our local, um, patrons came out and did a writing workshop on writing your family stories, which we know people in Dade County have a lot of family stories, so uh, I'm hoping that we're having a publishing workshop in August, so I'm really hoping some of those people are gonna come back with maybe some finished material, and can get some ideas on how to go about getting that published. Um, we also partnered with the, uh, school system, we were a satellite site for the summer feeding program through, um, the school. So we would go every morning and pick up some sack lunches and bring them to the library, we served three hundred and fifty lunches during the month of June. Um, so we were really grateful to be able to help with that, uh, we had a lot of folks coming into the library, they would come to our program and then stay for lunch, so that was really, obviously, it was very well utilized. And that time with teacher down there, I'm gonna get into that on the next slide, um, oh, maybe not the next slide, sorry. These are some of our prize winners, if you did the summer reading challenge and you read twenty minutes a day, um, for a total of seven weeks, even though the summer reading program's not over, we already have a ton of people that have completed the challenge and chosen a book for their home library, so this is one family, all four kids have their books that they chose, um, to take home with them. This is our time with teacher program, we have been trying to get this grant for the last couple of years, we had this a couple of years ago. We were not funded with the grant, other, um, library systems were chosen based on the fact that they hadn't had it before. But, um, during Library Day at the Capitol, our director, Lisa Eubanks, and our assistant director, Chelsea, Chelsea K, I have a hard time with her last name.
Thank you.
Kovaleski, I thought there was another syllable in there, but they went and spoke, and they met with Mike Cameron specifically, and he found some private funding for our time with teacher tutoring program, and what that is, it's a free tutoring program for anybody that can come, they sign up, all of our teachers are vetted, um, they're either retired, but they're all certified teachers, and they are paid through this grant money, and we have funded to get us through an entire year of funding this program, and anyone can bring their children in for free one-on-one tutoring with teachers. So we've already, if you saw that last slide, by the time I wrote that, we already had thirteen students, and we'd only been open for a week. Um, coming and getting free tutoring for an hour. It's really easy, they just go to our website, C H R L dot org backslash tutor, you also see time with teacher at the top, you click on that. You choose which branch you wanna go to, so the, we have three branches in Walker County, one here in Dade County, and then from there, you have bios of all the different teachers. We have eight teachers signed up with our program right now, and then they just put their availability and the subjects that they, um, wanna tutor in. We have materials for them to use for those as well, I think we had four today, we had four yesterday, we had a couple on Saturday. So we're really excited to be able to institute that program again. Uh, we have our Ask a Lawyer days, as I mentioned, I, I don't think, no, I didn't, I didn't talk last month, they called us and they wanted to extend, um, our cooperative effort, they're gonna be with us once a month through December at this point, because they've had such a good turnout, they usually have all of their slots filled. They come to the library and they offer free civil legal advice, so if you wanna set up an appointment with them, you have to call that number, because they do an intake, so please, we have that number posted, um, on our Facebook page, you can call the library, we will give you that number, because they wanna do some intake with you before you come and meet with them, but the next, um, upcoming dates will be, um, August tenth, September seventh, and October fifth, in addition to July thirteenth. I, I'm just gonna highlight real quick a few of our July summer reading programs, we've got beaten path rhythms coming back, they were really popular last year, they're doing two programs for us. They're doing a rhythmic celebration with the kids, everybody gets a percussion instrument, it's pretty loud in the library, that's what we should call it, loud in the library. Um, everybody gets something to beat on, um, and then they're coming back at five, and they're doing a teen drum circle, so we're excited about them coming back. We also, I'm so excited, we have improv Chattanooga coming, they are also gonna be doing a teen program, it's teen improv. So we've already had several families excited about that, and, um, that, that'll be a first for us, and we're, we're hoping it goes really well. And we have another adult writing workshop, um, this is Chris Wharton, she's a personal friend of mine, she came and did a reading from her recently published, uh, book of poetry, she's an amazing writer, she's a teacher at U T C, she teaches creative writing at U T C. And she's gonna be doing an adult writing workshop on, uh, generative ideas, you have an idea, how do you turn that into a piece of writing? So we're encouraging anybody that wants to write to come out and, uh, meet with Chris, call the library, we'll sign you up. And we're also bringing something else new, um, Ben Roy is also a professor at U T C, he teaches teachers how to teach science, and he does this science showcase for kids, so he's gonna come and be bringing a lot of fun sci- So, he's going to come and be bringing a lot of fun science manipulatives and things like that. He calls it a science showcase. That'll be Thursday, July 20th. That'll be our final Thursday program at 11:00. We're really excited about that. And then our final, final program, we were able to get the Georgia Ag Experience to come. They're going to bring their mobile classroom. They're going to park it in front of the library. And basically, we're going to rotate kids in and out of that, that mobile classroom. And they just present all the sort of agricultural experiences in Georgia in a mobile classroom. We're also going to have some fun lawn games and stuff like that for the kids that are waiting because I think they house 30 kids at a time in there and they work through. So, we're going to have some fun stuff outside on the lawn to do for the kids as well. And that'll wrap up our summer reading program on July 21st. And that's it. You can go to chrl.org and find any information about the library. We're also on Facebook. We figured out how to post events. I'm embarrassed to say we were not doing that, but we figured it out. So, all of our events are now posted in our event section, but we always have the Facebook feed posts about what's happening. And you can check out our calendar there as well. And we're, we're on Instagram too. There's been some really cute photos of some of the kids and even some of the adults who have won a free book for their, for their home library collection for our summer reading program. And once again, thank you all always for letting me share what's going on at the library. If you have any questions.
Any questions?
No, I guess. I met with Mindy last week and had a very good meeting. And I just appreciate her making it to the home and helping me with my questions.
Well, thank you. And I appreciate you coming. I encourage anybody to come to the library. Yeah, Phillip's come. You got some posters made. I know your wife has come and made a bunch of copies before. You know, we're willing to, I would love to give everybody just a tour of all the cool stuff that's going on at the library. Anytime, come see me and I'd be happy to meet with you.
On your door counter, is that in and out? Or is that, do they count people coming in and out? Or is that just a one?
That's just one.
Really?
Now, some of it, we, you know, we, we, sometimes we know it's going to double count people, but also sometimes it's basically a laser. And every time the laser's broken, it counts. And it's got a top layer. It's got a top laser and a bottom laser. And one counts the farthest away and one counts the closer. So, we know there's, there's margin of error in there. But also sometimes we'll get like five people all coming in as one group, those big families. So, I think it's, you know, there's always a margin of error. But we, we had 150 people come in the library yesterday. And boy, it feels like it. When you're, you know, we were down one staff member. She was taking some vacation days. So, I was working the front desk the whole day. And I said, I don't think I got any of my manager. I didn't get to wear my manager hat yesterday because I was busy helping all our patrons out, so.
Okay. Your report. Appreciate it.
Thanks, y'all.
All right, let's move down to Mr. Don Townsend, City County Finance Officer. If you go over financial report, Mr. Townsend.
All right, as of June 30th, we had a balance in the general fund of $1,551,861. The investments on hand were 1.5 million. So, it's a total of $2,651,861 available through the general fund. Federal asset fund, US Treasury has a balance of zero. Share special fund, a balance of $7,212. Drug abuse education fund, $8,896. Supplemental juvenile services fund, $28,831. Victim assistance fund, $1,425. Jail fund, $11,559. Federal asset fund, Department of Justice, zero. American Rescue Plan, $1,417,577. Accommodations tax, $270,033. Employees flexible spending, $22,285. Payroll account, $79,736. 2015 SPOS funds remaining is $97,627. 2021 SPOS projects account is a balance of $19,272. And the proceeds account has a balance of $2242,662,000. On the next page, you'll see the income statement as of May 31st. And the revenues for the month were $672,166. We budgeted $554,211. So, we were under budget, I'm sorry, in excess of funds for $117,955. Year-to-date, the budget actuals that had come in was $12,706,660. We'd budgeted $12,174,349. And so, again, we're in excess of $526,310 for the year. The revenue, the expense side of the income statement is $1 million for the month of May. $1,387, budgeted $1,288,208. So, we were over budgeted $33,178. Year-to-date, we've, we're expensed $12,458,923. We had budgeted $12,522,268. So, we were under budget for $63,344. Budget attained so far should be at 91.67%. Revenues attained were at 95.39%. Expenses attained were at 91.85%. So, that is for May 31st. Realize we do have one more month to go, even though we've just passed June 30th. And then as you may recall, we'll leave our books open for 60 days according to state law for any outstanding invoices to come in and post as well as checks. Most accounts payable will be posted by early, I'd say, early August. And, but we'll still have a few things meander their way in and get those posted. And then hopefully in early September, we'll have a final look at the budget for the FY '23 budget year. Local option sales tax revenue that was reported from the Department of Revenue. Our, this is of course the 80% of the total, 100% we get for the county. $243,409.13. And then the special purpose local option sales tax, and I printed the wrong one, wonderful, is $313,858.60 for the month of June, which represents actually two months ago. Okay, the next report is the SPOS tracking worksheet. We have the 2015 report and the 2021 report. 2021 report, you can see so far total expenditures, total $2,648,412 for the year. Last year was 1.5 million. This year so far has been 1.1 million. Well, again, these books stay open as well for 60 days. So, we may have a little bit more post before the final report concludes. 2015 SPOS report is pretty much the same as it's been. We're just awaiting final payments to the fire departments. I think we do have one fire department now that's, well, it looks like we've got two. West Brow and I believe North Dade have used all their funds. And it looks like Davis is down, pretty much used all their funds as well. Final report is the Dade County Tax Commissioner's Office, looking at July 1st, 2022 through May 31st, 2023. Year-to-date, revenues collected are $5,367,906. We'd budgeted through that same period, $5,495,500. So, little under budget, $127,593. That is at 97.68% of what we anticipate budget collection. These however, stay open for years actually. So, we will be collecting on this from now on. Although again, 60 days is the audited version of those financials. But typically, these are always collected well above 100%. That concludes the report.
Okay. Any questions? Corrections? Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve our financial report as presented by Mr. Townsend. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hartline. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second. Call a vote. Mr. Lowry.
Yes.
Hartline.
Yes.
Mr. Goff.
Yes.
Mr. Bradford.
Yes.
Chair vote yes. Motion passes. Okay. Robin, you got anything tonight? Anything for us?
I don't, Mr. Joe.
Okay. No new business. We've already got that. Okay. Mr. Townsend, would you please go over consent agenda please and workshop? And we'll entertain a motion pertaining to that, please.
Okay. We have the approval of the agendas amended by adding item 13, recycling program. Approval of the previous meeting minutes, the review and approval of the personal status report as presented, the historic courthouse restoration project report, a monthly report presented by BCM Incorporated. Resolution R-30-23, disposal of surplus county property, which is two four-wheelers as noted therein. And ordinance number 08-03-23, an amendment to the hotel motel accommodations. Excise tax passed on July 5th, 2018. That's the first reading only. That's it.
Okay. Any questions? Corrections? Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve a consent agenda as presented by Mr. Townsend. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bradford. Do I have a second?
Take it.
Okay, motion second. Call a vote. Mr. Lowry.
Yes.
Hartline.
Yes.
Mr. Goff.
Yes.
Mr. Bradford.
Yes.
Chair vote yes. Okay, motion carries. All right. I don't think we need an executive session tonight. Anybody got anything else they want to say before we adjourn? Okay. Appreciate everyone staying with us for tonight and appreciate, hope everyone had a safe 4th of July. And this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting. Have a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, I have a second.
Second.
Call a vote. Mr. Hartline.
Yes.
Mr. Lowry.
You missed me.
Goff.
Yes.
Mr. Bradford.
Yes.
Chair vote yes. You vote for him.
Correct, so you vote for him.
All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.